Welcome to the Selectman's meeting for the Town of Acton, Maine for January 29th, 2020. First item is salute the flag.
(inaudible)
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 Okay. Town Administrator Weekly Update.
So I have a variety of things on my list today, and with the Board's permission, some of them are kind of directed to the public, but I thought it was easier than having to speak again under Department Heads, so if that's okay with you?
Yep.
Yes. So the first thing that I wanted to talk about was the special town meeting that we have coming up on February 3rd. I did watch the warrant and finance meeting, and I wanted to just kind of have a chance to put some of the information out there, just to help provide more information to them and also to the public that might possibly have seen the meeting. So, the Town of Acton entered into a contract for this a couple of years back, and this has been an ongoing process. We created a committee that members of Sanford, Acton, and Chapley are on, and it's been an ongoing process. During the committee meetings, the committee votes on the amount of money that they're going to spend and appropriate. On, in July of 2019, it's July 30th, there are meeting minutes that the committee met, and they voted on a change order. And that change order authorized expenditure higher than what the committee had actually agreed upon. So, when we had town meeting in June of 2019, we only had one number to go by, and that's why we appropriated and moved forward the $75,000 request, because that was the number that we thought at that point, we knew it was still in negotiations. So a month after town meeting, they have a change order, and they do increase the amount. And they increased Acton's share to 93,454. What's important to note is that the Town of Acton didn't act on this in July for two reasons. If you go on to read the rest of the minutes from that change order, it says noted the possible reductions of Task 3 on the field operations of eight hours a day for $1,100 a day. So the committee made it very clear, and I know more of this from my Chapley side, but it's all the same regardless of what town you are, the committee made it clear that there was a good possibility that that change order number was going to drop. And it was at the request of that committee and the Town of Sanford that we not, the final bills not be sent out until the rest of the work was done, the drilling was done, and we saw what exactly was there. So that's why there's such a gap from July of 19, when that change order, to now when you're just, when you're getting it. So the City of Sanford has sent us a bill, which I know the warrant and finance got, but the public will be able to view on Monday, dated January 6th. So on January 6th, we've been getting emails saying that the work is complete, and they just sent out the final bill. So Acton's share is 93,454. When I got this bill, I put it on the next Selectman's agenda. You go back and look at the tapes, on January 8th, the Board of Selectmen talked about this. We talked about the shortage, and we addressed it immediately with a warrant, with a special town meeting. So that's a timeline, and hopefully that just helps answer some of the questions as why there was that gap there, because we didn't know if it was going to be less, we didn't know about the holes drilling until the water was completely down, it was their request that we wait until they could send us a final bill, which just happened. Okay?
Sounds good.
So hopefully that adds a little, a little more information from that piece.
A little more, a little more information too, from after the work is done. I mean, when this was all said, they had a map that showed, I don't remember the number of holes, but X number of holes was the target. And we, there was, I think, nine holes, maybe more, outside of that target area that was a possibility. And we'd really, everybody hoped that that wouldn't be the case, but as it is, they got going, and they did have to do those other holes. But now this is all done, one particular hole, I can't tell you exactly where it was because I haven't seen the map, but one hole took 1,000 pounds of grout to fill a void in that dam. So, that right there in itself says, this project had to be done. So, the next, the next highest was like 150 pounds, and then 100 pounds, and the rest of them were all marginal under that, so. But 1,000 pounds in one hole, I mean, I don't know what's, I don't know what this grout looks like, I don't know how big of an area that would be, probably at least the size of this table, if not bigger.
(inaudible)
Yeah, you get like a 50, yeah, 50-pound bag, so if you can imagine, you know, the amount of those to stack up to make a, make a thousand pounds, so. Anyway, but, you know, it's just a matter now of, the water level is back up to the winter level, so, which means come spring, it should go back up to where it needs to be, and it should be moving forward, so. We don't really take questions at this time, but...
(inaudible)
Not really.
(inaudible)
Yeah, once, once we get beyond this, yeah. So, go ahead.
So the other, the next thing that I wanted to address, and I'm glad to see that a majority of the warrant and finance committee is here, and I just guess kind of wanted to go on the record and, and just reiterate the concerns that we're having with emails, and just take, take 30 seconds to, to be able to just kind of lay it out there. So, this is regarding the special town meetings. The warrant and finance had a meeting on, on January 21st to discuss the special town meeting. At that meeting, several members of the warrant and finance indicated that they had not, they didn't have the special town meeting warrant, okay? I, when I saw that on the tape, I quickly went to my emails and went to the sent, and said, I know I sent it, I, you know, hopefully I sent it, and I had sent it, I had sent it on January 16th. Additionally, the week before, on January 9th, the warrant and finance chair received hard copies and passed them out to the warrant and finance committee members that were present at the school. So the committee had them from the, from the 9th, and then again on the 16th. The reason that I bring this up is really more from the email piece. So when I found out that, that my email had in fact been sent, I checked the town server, I reached out to our IT guy and had him hand check a couple of the warrant and finance email addresses. Check two random and see, is that email on 116 at this time from the Town Administrator sitting on the inbox? And it was. We only checked two of the accounts, but it was there. So it, so it applied, so I know that it went. So, on the 23rd, I sent the warrant and finance an email, and I did send this to the personal emails as well, and I appreciate Mr. Waterhouse reminding us at, at meetings that we shouldn't be using personal. But sometimes if I'm sending the warrant and finance committee members things that I know got sent, and we verified they got sent, you didn't get it for whatever reason, I have to add the personal email addresses so that I know you see my next email. So on the 23rd, I sent another email, just letting the committee know that I had watched the meeting on the 21st, that I had in fact sent it on the 16th, that it had been hand-delivered on the 9th, and just reminded you that if you please, please have any trouble logging in, I can't fix it if I don't know about it. So that email was sent on the 20th, 23rd. A couple of days later, on the 27th, the warrant and finance had another meeting. And at that meeting, it was again discussed that there was trouble with the email. I had just sent the email out a couple of days earlier, so if you don't tell me it's not working, I can't fix it. And I know that the first email went because I sent it to the home email addresses. So, I just kind of putting the paper trail out there so that you guys know that they were all sent, I'm trying the best that I can with these emails, but if you don't tell me they're not working, I wouldn't have any way to fix it. We did a little bit of troubleshooting with Mr. Gores, that's all resolved now, did a little bit with Rollin', that was a password issue, and I know the, the computer slash phone issue, Carol, that you were having, you're working directly with Teto with. So perfect. So as far as I know, as of now, everybody's email is up and running, it's working. If you have an issue, please contact me directly. Couple other things, just to update the board, we did get all the medals ordered today for the Rec Committee, so those will be on on Friday, it did notify the Chair. We are, notified the Chair that they'd be in Friday, I'm not sure when closing ceremonies are, but guessing they're coming up. Budget workshop, the Selectmen and Treasurer, the Treasurer and I would like the Selectmen to come to the budget workshop on the 10th at 4:00. It's a Monday. We have all but two budgets, deadline's not until tomorrow, so there'll be no public bashing of those departments, but it is tomorrow if you haven't gotten yours in, or Friday, I'm sorry.
10th.
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 So 4:00, because we really need some guidance. We're with the budgets we're, we're getting in, we're seeing, you know, 2% salary increases, we're seeing $5 an hour increases, they're kind of all over the place, so we need to sit down and, and focus in on what, what you guys want to move forward. I wanted to let you know that the SQL conversions with Trio and Harris started Monday, they logged into the server, and what they do is basically create a dummy program behind the scenes with the new SQL conversion that, that we have to upgrade to. So they've done all of that work behind the scenes, it took most of yesterday, and we'll be doing some trial runs beginning of the week, some training. In regards to the assistant position that's open in my office, we have still only received a handful of applications, some with some, some office skills, really not a lot of strong office skills. We did pull out two people that, that had fairly strong computer skills that we feel might be a good fit. We are in the process of doing some interviewing and having them do a little bit of job shadowing, so just a couple hours on a Thursday night to see if it's a good fit, how they kind of feel around the computer, dealing with the customers, and hopefully we'll have a recommendation for you. This is Michelle and I, over the next week or two.
Great.
Town report is done, it is, I need a final proof, so it's going to be...
Did you get the one we were waiting for?
I did get an email from, from the Board Commissioner with that report.
Beautiful.
Yes. So it's all in, it seems to flow nicely, as far as, you know, things falling, falling on the right pages. It's one of those things that Cheryl and I look at so many times a day, really need to walk away from it from a day or two, and then completely proof it from start to finish. So I'm hoping by Monday to have it to the printers, and certainly by, it's not quite, this isn't the final final, but I am looking for a good proofer. The problem with proofing some of those is that I don't want to change departments' reports. I mean, if it's something, you know, jumps out, but I, overall, we don't want to check, we don't want to change it.
More grammatic, grammar and whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, I like things to line up, and I like, you know what I mean, it's going to be a certain way, but I definitely want you to read the dedication too, we need to, to talk about that. Other things, I guess, other two were just kind of an FYI, more for the public, so we, they don't think that we forgot about Article 43, we are still diligently working on that. We actually had a workshop, just posted, that we had with our attorney today, went over some drug testing issues, went over some issues on Flat Ground Road, and went over Article 43, so he's going to be putting some drafts together as far as helping us with the actual application, and a cover letter, and some things that he recommends, so we're hoping to, to bring something back for the next couple of weeks to start looking at.
Yep.
As far as Flat Ground Road, just as kind of an update, the Board is looking at and discussing bringing it before town meeting to make it an actual town road to a certain point, get it adopted in. So, we're looking into the legalities of that with the contract and what we'd have to do to it, so it's very preliminary. Couple of notices, more for under the Department Heads. So the municipal caucuses have both been scheduled, we're going to start running some advertisements, because it, we are running both the Republican and Democrat together. The Republican is February 8th at 1:00 here at the Town Hall, the Democratic Caucus is March 8th also, this one starts at 4:00 PM. A notice that is going to be run in the Smart Shopper that's very important for all of you as voters to hear, I'm going to read quickly. "The State of Maine will be holding a presidential primary and a referendum election on Tuesday, March 3rd. If you are currently enrolled in a political party and intend to change for this primary, the deadline to change parties is Friday, February 14th. Main law states that if you change parties, it must be done 15 days before any primary or caucus." So think about that as your caucus dates are coming forward as well. "If you are unenrolled, you may enroll in a party at any time, including on Election Day, including at the caucus. However, you must remain in that party for three months. All voters, regardless of the, of the party, will receive any referendum or town ballots at all the elections. Remember, the only time that matters how we're registered is at primaries and caucuses, otherwise, everybody gets the same ballot. If you are unsure and want to confirm your party affiliation, certainly give us a call or come into the office, and we'll double-check." So those deadlines have no wiggle room, so please double-check your party and make sure you know if you're where you want to be. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Warrant some bills, I think I've signed them earlier.
Yep.
They're all signed, okay, that's all set. So next is the approval of the agenda. Do we want to talk about the website? It's not on the, not on the agenda?
Um...
Website and emails?
So, email I'm ready to talk about, well, I guess I'm not ready to talk about it. I've been working with Mr. Corey in regards to what it would look like to turn the town server over to a Gmail, and he was reaching out to corporate, we don't have any final information for you yet.
Okay, okay.
So I'll put it on for next week and hope to have some more information.
Sounds good. Okay, do I hear approval of the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
(inaudible)
Move to second to approve the agenda, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Minutes of the last few meetings, we have what, three?
Three sets.
We have three. I have one, so I'll do this one. I'd like to approve the Selectmen meeting minutes of January 15th.
Move to second to approve the minutes of January 15th, any further discussion? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes, meaning January 22nd and December 18th.
I'll second that.
Okay. Move to second to approve December 18th and January 22nd, any discussion on those? Call for vote, all in favor, all opposed. Okay. Department Heads Committee Chair Updates, do we have any?
Good evening, Dennis Long, Chairman of the Warrant Finance Committee. We had our first meeting last Thursday with the school committee. We started that budget process with them, and it went very well. At the Warrant Finance Committee meeting the other night, I explained that my definition of what the Warrant Finance Committee meant, I didn't feel I really presented it that well. So, they decided that, with your permission, Ed, to have the Secretary do the, basically a report of the warrant finance meeting the other night, with your permission.
Interested?
With your permission.
It's going to be all of us, not just like a single one of us out.
I'm fine.
So, all set?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The following thoughts, concerns, and clarifications are taken from the draft minutes of the January 27th Warrant Finance meeting, and all committee members agreed by unanimous vote to have me share this at tonight's Board of Selectmen meeting in response to the emails sent on behalf of the Selectmen on Sunday stating that no town employee will be allowed to attend our meeting scheduled for the following evening. This was to include all staff from Town Hall, Fire, Road, and Transfer Station. This was in reaction to the Board asking the Warrant Finance Committee to take over the Capital Improvement Committee, and at our last meeting, we discussed this and came to a conclusion that it would not be within the parameters of the ordinance that governs our committee. If we were to be the committee to be responsible for the development of a capital improvement plan, then the ordinance would need to be changed by the annual town meeting. Also, we feel that it would be a conflict of interest to the committee that develops and then reviews objectively the financial impact the plan would have on the town. Due to the fact that we declined taking over this committee, although the Selectmen appreciated our attempt to gather information, information on capital improvements, they did not feel it was appropriate for the employees to discuss their intentions in regard to the capital planning with our committee. We feel that the intent of this meeting had been misunderstood, and would like to offer the following clarifications. We, the Warrant Finance Committee, are elected officials by the annual town meeting, we're a separate entity responsible for reviewing warrants and making informed recommendations on the financial impact to the town's people. We do not answer or report to any one person aboard but to the entire town meeting. One of the biggest parts of being a financial advisor is the ability to look ahead and forecast what is coming down the road in both the short and long-term future. This meeting was to get everyone together and hear what they had planned for major projects coming up. This would allow us time to prepare questions and concerns before getting into the full swing of the budget season. Over the past few years, the budget timeline seems shorter. Oftentimes, there is so much going on during those couple of months that it is difficult for this committee to give the capital improvements full consideration. It is the responsible thing to do, and we feel that we owe that thorough consideration to the taxpayers who have elected us. This is not the first Warrant Finance meeting that's been canceled or undermined by this Board. We respectfully request that you follow the advice we receive from MMA, that our ordinance gives us the right to call meetings, set agendas, et cetera. We would like to be allowed to do the job that we've been elected to do, and advisory boards should be able to advise, and in order to do that, we must stay informed. Every committee and department that we spoke with seemed to think that this would be a positive thing. The committee could not come up with a possible negative outcome of bringing everyone together and having open communication prior to the budget season. This would not have been a debate just in informal session for the purpose of financial forecasting and communication. We are looking forward to starting off the budget season on a positive note. Under Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 402, Definitions of Public Proceedings, and 406 Public Notice, we request the minutes of the meeting where, after consideration of the full Board, they may adjoint decision not to allow the town staffer or employees to attend this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, in, just my two cents worth in this, I appreciate everything you, you said. You, the whole capital improvement thing contradicts itself. In one way, we asked if the Board wanted to take it over, but maybe that would be a good way to go, since we didn't really get anybody that wanted to be on the committee.
Other than the people on the Finance Committee.
Well, a couple, yeah, a couple on the Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee, that's why we came up with the idea.
Yeah, so we, you know, we said, well, you want to take it on, it sounds like a good idea. You voted, nope, you don't want to take it on, you know, and I can understand that, it's a lot of work, so, no problem, but then you're going to invite everybody in and talk about capital improvements. So, that's where we're coming from. So I think what I'd like to do, I'd like to ask the two other members on the Board here, you want to try one more time to get a small capital improvement committee together, maybe, maybe consisting of just three people, because it doesn't need to be huge.
I think we came up with a pretty good idea originally, remember when we talked about taking ahead of each department?
Yeah, but that's, that's taken, that's, that's a huge committee.
Yeah.
I think if you narrow that down, and just have, say, three people on it, and I'd be willing to sit on it.
Would you have, have us go and talk to the other Department Heads?
And have the other, you know, have the...
Or have them come and talk.
Have the Department Heads come in, yeah. Basically...
Yes, it needs to be done.
It's similar to having a liaison, if you will.
Okay.
It's, rather than that Department Head coming to a liaison to talk about a capital improvement item, he could go to the Capital Improvement Committee. I don't know what you think of that idea, but it's, you know, I don't know, it's just an idea.
(inaudible)
Whoa. I just don't want to see...
You kind of need odd numbers, so you know...
Yeah, I just don't want to see every Department Head be on the committee, because I think it's just going to get bogged down.
Yeah.
Because you're going to end up talking about everything that each Department Head wants to do that night.
And their, on their department only.
Right, right, so that's why I was thinking, so say three to five.
I mean, originally, when we'd come up with this idea, you know, about them taking over that committee, was because we had originally talked and, and rolled and came up with a really good idea that we could have come up with, you know, an ordinance for the capital improvement before we actually go and put members on it, which...
That could be.
We have to do at...
But we wanted to find out if that was something they even thought was feasible. That was, that was the question, was, is it something you would want to do, is it feasible? But like Carol just said, it's a conflict of interest, so it doesn't sound like that's something we should be doing anyhow. So we should be getting a committee together.
Within that committee.
Right.
Right.
Is that, is that, am I, okay.
Yeah.
What, like I was saying, was, the only reason we even asked them is because we had already projected this was the route we were going to go, we were going to get an ordinance together, we were going to go that route, we talked about taking Department Heads, dah 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 dah, but at the same time, they were planning a capital improvement meeting, so we asked, well, if you're already doing this, then why should we do this?
Yeah.
Right.
That's why, that's the only reason we did that.
Yeah.
But the problem I saw was, when I watched the meeting, it wasn't, the question wasn't asked the way we asked the question to be asked, because we asked, would you be willing to take over part of the, you know, the capital improvement? And if so, we would take the recommendation of one of your finance committee members, and so, and we would alter the ordinance so you could do so, so there wouldn't be those issues. But that was never asked during that meeting, it was whether or not we wanted to be part of that committee. And, and I'm going to continue on here, and so, the reason why this kind of, kind of all bubbled together was, like Ed said, was, okay, well, we have, they said they didn't want to do it, and I was like, I was in unanimous vote, I believe, that they did not want to be part of the capital improvement, but they were still saying they were having a capital improvement meeting next Monday. And what ended up happening last week was, we had the, we had the meeting, our Selectmen's meeting, and when the question came up, you're still having a meeting, and we're like, yep, and we kind of like, oh, we were both confused a little bit, I think. I think that's exactly what we said.
I was, yeah.
And, and I guess we were kind of like, okay, and sat down, well, after the meeting, there was a, there was an issue. We never discussed whether or not that the staff was going to go to that meeting or not.
Well, and not to interrupt you, it is...
We did, we did discuss it at, at the meeting.
We made a decision on it.
Well, we did, we...
Well, you did, if you go to the, the meeting, and I don't want to interrupt the Selectmen, but if you go to the Selectmen's meeting from last week, it was right around the 40-minute mark, don't quote me on exactly 40 minutes, but it is in the meeting, so they did have, they did discuss whether or not we were going, and they, and they said that we weren't going.
Right.
Well, it was, it was a two to one...
Well, no, he's, Ed had said in that meeting that we weren't to go, because I went back and watched it today.
They did, yeah.
I, out of courtesy, Kim was out with bronchitis, called her the next day, because that's a big move, sorry, guys, I mean, that's a big move to say the staff isn't going. I felt like I owed it to her to say, hey, Kim, this is what the guys decided, I mean, it wasn't a formal vote, but they did clearly say in that meeting that we weren't to go.
Right.
So, sorry.
But at the end of the day, the end of the day, when we looked at the whole, the whole process here, it was kind of like, there's a conflict in itself, and, but we hadn't even, we haven't even started budget season yet, and we have, we got budgets due on the 31st of this month. And it was kind of premature to have all these people come in that we oversee, and have you guys get these, any of you guys said you aren't going to go over numbers, but those, that's the reason why you go to the Finance Committee. Let's go over numbers and budgets, and it's supposed to be going over warrant articles. And there was no warrant articles, so to me, it was a waste of time. I believe that we, we will be getting our budgets here January 31st, and we're going to go through them, and we're going to try to be as transparent as we can, and work with the Finance Committee, but that's it.
Good, Dennis.
The bottom line is, regardless whether I asked the question properly or not, the Warrant Finance Committee said they did not want to develop a capital improvement plan, okay? So, what I asked, in a sense, is irrelevant, because the Warrant Finance Committee asked you, answered your question, okay? And as far as this Capital Improvement Committee, we, you guys have talked about before, it wasn't just Warrant Finance Committee members that offered to be on it either, and...
It was Department Heads.
And there was a few, yes. And I was under the impression, as of the meeting last week, especially the conversation we had after the meeting, that it was the Town Hall staff that wasn't supposed to come to our meeting.
Right, and after I called Kim and told her, her question, question came up with, well, define staff, okay? Like, I go back to my chair and say, define staff. I mean, it was a trickling effect, I mean...
I appreciate that, Jen, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, and I'm, and I don't expect you to, you, you work for the Board of Selectmen. And we had this conversation, I think it was Friday or Thursday night or something, you had talked to Kim. I, I guess, you know, as far as it being a waste of time, respectfully, if these committee members and, and Department Heads all thought it was a good idea, if we want to sit there and have a conversation, it's really our time that we'd be wasting, and, and it's not costing the taxpayers any money, other than the lights, I guess. So I really didn't see the rationale for not allowing that.
Okay. So, back to the question I had for the other two members of the Board, do we want to still try to put together a committee?
I do.
That can work, you know, through some of this, and...
You know, and I want to be on it.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There probably should be only one Selectman on it, so if you wish to be on it, that'll be fine? be fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if there's-
Are we going to do the one?
Pardon? I don't think we need to do an ordinance for it, I think we can just have a committee and just have, have, I mean, you, we know what the job is going to be, look for capital improvement items, things that, that they look, that the department heads see as something other than their budget, other than a special project, something bigger, something that-
So, really, like a five-year plan, including the whole town?
Yeah, it may take several, two to three years or whatever.
It would be nice if it was a three, five, and a 10-year plan.
Yeah, to, yeah, to accomplish and, and go from there.
Can it, can we have two weeks to get names of people, and then-
Wait, then one of you might-
Yeah, I want to do two weeks.
Yeah, yeah, two weeks.
And then I want names, and then I, and then pick a date to get people.
Five people?
Yeah.
Do you want to do five, five person, is that okay with you?
Four, so we're looking for four names, because Kim makes her-
Four more names, yeah.
Four more names.
And are we going to put, are you going to put a policy together, or you're just going to let them go and just run with it for now?
We could do, we could do a mini policy for it, that's not a, yeah, with, with some guidelines. I mean, that's easy, I mean, I pretty much have spelled out what they would be, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll get a notice posted.
Yeah, so, with that, if there's anybody out there, anyone in the audience here tonight, or anyone watching that want to be on the committee?
Yeah.
I see a couple of hands up already, so now we're down to needing just more people, possibly.
And they need to send an email or something, it's going to be in writing, have a full letter.
Yeah, it's got to be, it's got to be something in writing.
Send them in with email, if you want to be on it.
Yeah, get ahold of town administrator, let her know, and she'll put the names forward, so.
So, if we can get this done within the next two weeks, then we can set a date-
Yeah.
On when the meet.
Because chances are, whatever comes out of this committee, and whatever work they do between now and town meeting time, there probably won't be anything going on, no financial numbers going on that this year's town meeting.
Based on the guidelines or the timeframe that you put together with the treasury, you're not going to, I mean-
Right, and it's more, it's more putting together a three and a five and a 10-year plan as to where we're going to need to be, because, you know-
You still got to deal with the department heads and all that.
Right, right.
Well, yeah, we'd, once we get the committee set up, then we'd have a command.
Yeah, so basically what I'm saying is, don't expect numbers to show up on this year's town meeting based on this new committee.
And our, but, I mean, our departments have all put in what they actually need for this year now, so if there was something, you know what I mean, a road issue or-
Right.
A piece of equipment, they put them on anyway, so.
Yeah, yeah, so, and, and if we see something as we're going through, there may be something that would come up on this year's budget, that we look at and say, boy, it's a good idea, but maybe you want to plan this out for maybe three years, we may kick it to the committee, say, look at this and possibly set it up for that, so, okay? So, all in all, I think this has worked out pretty well, so, and, as I talked to Dennis the other night, him, both Dennis and I talked about how committees and departments and whatnot will have a vote on something. It may be unanimous, but it may not be, under, under the water. Dennis knows what I'm talking about, and I think everyone does. You know, I've had times when I've, have voted yes on something, not felt 100% strong on it, but, I mean, I know Dennis, I hate to, I don't want to single you out, Dennis, but, I mean, you, you are passionate about the capital improvement thing, you brought it up, I think initially, so.
Passionately.
And I think it's a great idea, so, and I told you the other night, I would work to keep moving it forward, and we're trying.
And it's also the recommendation of our audit.
I think, it is, it is a recommendation of our audit.
And Michelle, she's the first one that was, she's on the game.
Yes, yeah, yeah, our treasurer's been pushing it for it too, so, it is definitely the right thing to do, I like, you know, I think I've seen some, seen some good hands going up for people that want to be on it, so, okay, let's move beyond that one, it works out great. Any other department heads or committee chairs? Going once, going twice? Okay, moving on. Old business, policies.
Tabled until next week.
Tabled until next week? Okay, Goat Hill.
So, I did send you these emails that he's going to be discussing as they came in, but just have a hard copy in front of you in case he references them.
There you go.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, the last time I was here, we spoke-
Just state your name, I know we know who you are.
Carl Davis.
Thanks.
Yep. When we spoke, my task was to get ahold of John Copeland and try to get some more detailed information about his experience and his work that he's going to propose for the Goat Hill Trail.
He was one of the two bids?
One of the two.
Okay.
Yep.
Yeah.
And he got back in the email with a price of $55,450, is his price. As you remember, the other one was $190,000.
Right.
Right. That was the original bid, we have that.
Yeah. Do we know why there was such a discrepancy in the two bids?
No.
Okay.
We didn't ask.
Okay, yeah, that's fine.
I don't, I didn't, yeah.
Okay.
Didn't have to notify the other fellow, but, no feedback.
Okay.
So, since then, John has sent a couple of emails, which you have copies of. The first one is going over his experience in trail construction over the past, I don't know, four or five years, I would say.
2003.
What's that?
2003, he started in the trails.
2003, okay, yeah, time goes by, doesn't it? Yeah, 2003. So, he's been at it quite a while, working on trails, and done quite a bit of work with ADA compliant trails.
So, he's well experienced and qualified to do the work. I think the money piece is the, the piece you want to focus on as far as where we're at with the grant and how you intend on getting the rest of the money.
And then the third email was a description of the work that he's going to do at Goat Hill. This is not a contract or anything at this point, but it's, it gives you a good idea of what he's planning to do, what he's going to use for equipment, how things are going to be done, and that sort of thing. And then Doug Beck from the Land and Water Conservation Fund sent out an email that the town did get approved for that funding, which he's going to send something to Jennifer that'll need to be signed with a selectman. One of the issues, and, and we probably should talk about this a little bit, is eventually there'll be a contract from John, and with the funding from LWCF, which is all, is a 50-50 match, so that's around $23,000. We have another grant from the Main Outdoor Heritage Fund, which is $13,000. So, we roughly have $34,000 out of the 55, $450 in hand at the moment, but we're short the balance of that, which we're working on, obviously, and we will get-
Some grants or something.
Yeah, yeah, we're applying to a grant that's due March 4th, and we also are fundraising. So, I mean, it's, we'll get there, the problem will be is, when we sign a contract with John, the town does, you know, it, somehow or another, I don't know how we would work that out, that-
We signed a contract with John.
Right, but there's going to be a legal stipulation in there that if the money's not raised by such and such, that we're going to be able to get out of it.
Get out of it.
Yeah, there'll be a legal clause in the bottom.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
I mean, we have to, because we can't, it's not, right?
Right.
So, we'll put that, once you're, once you're certain of what day you think you might have it by, when you have the contract in hand-
Yep.
And when your fundraiser deadline is by, we can put all that together and turn it back over to Burke and Clegg. He drafted up the original stuff and put something together and see if John will accept it as is.
Yep, okay.
Does that sound like it would work, or?
Yeah, I think so, and we should have, by the time all that happens, we should have, hopefully, some more news on some of these other grants.
Good.
One of them's due the 4th of March, and I think you find out pretty quickly.
Did he say in the email, I didn't, I kind of skimmed through it, how long that price was good for?
Well, the finish date is September 30th.
Oh, yeah, so we had said, said work to be completed in the spring, therefore must be valid through September of 2020, so we've got-
Right, right.
Good. Is there anything that you need from us so that we can do to help?
No, I think we're all set.
Thank you.
Sounds great. Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, new business, rider, additional camera.
So, we have the three cameras that are installed, and I do have some signage that we're having made up. Look at the screens in the administrator or the treasurer's office, you've got a divis, it's divisible by three, you've got a big square of black, felt like we were a little, it wasn't the direction that I thought it was going to be in. So, after negotiating back and forth, they've agreed to cover it just for the price of the camera, $439, which is quite a deal, install it at that price so that you can have a fourth one on that window, so. This is, and I had mentioned it to all you, I think I forwarded you the emails, but that's the rider if you support it, and this is the rider for the pole stations, although you did approve the amounts, the actual contract wasn't signed, so this is for the five pole stations throughout the building.
Yeah, we did too. Okay.
Yeah, I think I had to sign the quote, sorry.
Probably. Okay, let's do the, let's do the camera first. So, this is to add an additional camera, one, it's a 2MP indoor/outdoor bullet camera, for the two, let's see, $439, which adds $4.18 a month to the bill. What's your wishes?
Make a motion, we signed the agreement for the camera, what's the number on the camera?
That's fine, just, just-
Yeah, 2MP indoor/outdoor bullet camera.
Yeah.
For $439, and a monthly fee of $4.18.
Yep, okay.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to approve the purchase of the camera, and this was installation as well, correct?
Correct.
Okay, any further discussion? Any further vote, all in favor, all opposed? See an actual place here on, to sign this, you just want to initial?
The third, third page, I think.
Third page, oh, there we go. Customer authorization. It's more sign above it. Okay. Okay, and this one is to add five pole stations on the exterior doors with marked exit signs. The total dollar, and this is, yes, for the pole stations, total dollar amount is $1,650, and the fee is $6.08 a month. That's for all five?
Correct.
Okay. What is your wishes on this?
I make a motion, we accept the agreement, we'll lay five pole stations for $1,650, and $6.08 a month.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded to accept the contract for the pole stations. Any further discussion? Any further vote, all in favor, all opposed? And this was fire alarm.
Correct.
Fire alarm system.
This is recommended by Rick.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, we have no, there's no-
And I think, I think you'd find the insurance company would be more than happy to.
Yeah.
Okay, collections, deceased patient.
So, we're still in the process of working out the fine print with the collections piece of it, as far as turning it over on the agreement that you guys signed. I was hoping for your input on creating a policy that will waive the balance on any run of a deceased person. So, essentially, if some, if someone passes away, the insurance company automatically gets billed, but if it comes back to the, it comes back to the billing company, they send Michelle and I monthly reports, and for the HIPAA training, we're able to go through and tell them if anybody on the list is deceased, so, looking for your thoughts on creating such a policy.
Yeah, I mean, I'll just say someone dies, and that's-
I mean, you know, in some cases, there are surviving spouses, I don't want to, you know, but the, I mean-
I, I don't have an issue with it, because I don't think we should throw a burden on a surviving spouse either for someone that passed.
Oh, no, I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
So, I'm going to-
Yeah, I don't see an issue with that.
All right, so there's a couple on here that we'll have him go ahead and waive, I won't bother going through them with you, because I can confirm.
Can we waive them with people funny, different?
Well, if they come and ask, right, right.
Right.
I just didn't want to have to bring those before you, if we created generic policy that once, if they get it back a second time, and, okay, so I'll work on something for next week or so. And I can write, we can have him write off any that we can confirm are deceased.
Mm-hmm.
There's a total of 60 accounts that we're looking at sending over to the collections.
Okay. Good. Okay, freedom of information.
So, I received a freedom of information today.
Okay, we typically read these out?
Yep, we have in the past.
This one is from a Mr. Charles Cresby, looking, let's see, the subdivision sketch plan for, what's that, 260-770?
I think it's 760.
760?
770.
Youngs Ridge Road. Map 21, lots 28, 29, and 30, with all supporting materials and associated correspondence. Okay, your wishes?
No, I don't think we have the information.
Don't, okay.
Freedom of information.
Is there a blurbage on the email? I just want to make sure that, is there, because he's making a specific request.
Hope I read you everything that's on here, you just have to verify the numbers.
What is this, how does it start?
The subdivision sketch plan? Sketch plan.
Okay.
It just says, this is our form, correct? Yes.
Yeah, no, it's our form, there's more, there was a little, I just want to make sure, okay, so, "Good evening, attaches a freedom of information request for the sketch plan materials and the proposed development on Youngs Ridge Road. He was told that the applicant is expected to submit the materials tomorrow. He's asking the selectman to prove it and ask the department to move on it as quick as they can, because there's a February 6th planning board meeting."
Okay, it does say information is needed by-
Well, I just want to make sure that that's the direction of the board, that you want it, you want me to tell them to, to get them that?
Hmm?
Get him that, that quickly?
Sure.
I don't know, she can verify it by the map and lots.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that, I just don't want to go down, you know, just don't want to present it if it's not your wishes.
No, it's requested here on the 29th of January, and it does, information is needed by 5 February 2020.
Is this something that-
That's what, next week, late next week?
We generally expedite, I mean-
Well, I mean, it's seven days, seven days, I mean, it should, if it's just, I mean, I haven't read over, but if it's, based on the email, it's just a sketch that they're expecting to be delivered tomorrow.
Subdivision sketch plan, is what he's looking for.
All right.
Request a sketch plan, materials for proposed subdivision that he's expected to submit tomorrow, so if they come in tomorrow, I mean, maybe, if they're right there, just a matter of putting it through the copier, and certainly we'll offer to assist if we can to help.
Yeah.
All right.
Try to find a happy medium between their workload and meeting the freedom of information.
Yeah, yeah. We're just, we're going to initial in the box.
There you go.
Land use notice.
So, it's in your box out in the hallway, so I opened it, read it aloud, it's official notice for you from the land use department.
Oh, go ahead.
Oh, you want me to read it?
You can read it.
All right. The Acton subdivision regulations require that you, the Acton Board of Selectmen, are notified that Patrick Stevens filed a preliminary subdivision plan application with the Acton Planning Board proposing a two-lot subdivision on Milton Mills Road. Planning Board meetings are held the first and third Thursdays of each month and are open to the public for informational purposes only. Public hearings are set by the board members in accordance with subdivision regulations providing the opportunity to the abudders and the residents to bring concerns, questions, or support the planning board regarding the project. Sorry. Another letter will be sent through certified mail of the date and time of the hearing.
Okay.
You've been notified.
Notified. Okay, executive session?
I do have one. Do you want to do public comment first, or?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, let's go to public comment next. So, open for public comment. Anyone from the public? Anyone at all?
Cemetery Committee member. I was asked by the cemetery committee to see if anyone can tell us who owns the memorial out there. That land out there has to belong to somebody. A question has come up, if you look in front of the, I forget which monument it is, I think it's the, I know it's a Vietnam, probably Vietnam and Korea. There is a very large piece of stone that sits right in front of it. If you step on that, there's a hollow sound underneath, and people are concerned that that may be a hazard. So, it was brought up at the cemetery committee, cemetery committee meeting to see if we can determine who owns the property there, because cemetery doesn't, or the cemetery committee doesn't.
I'm sure if we look on the maps...
I mean, it's gotta be the town of the church, right?
It's either the town or the church.
Well, it's either the town or the church.
I believe it's the church, because the last time we went to have some trees cut over there, remember when we...
That was back there.
No, we're talking about right over front here, right?
Okay.
Right, so that tree, right? That tree that was over, we had, we were gonna put the yellow ribbons on. I feel like, I'll double check, I'll have the assessor check, but I feel like it's the church.
I was just asked to bring it forward.
Yep.
Do you want me to report next week, or can I send the committee an email?
Send the committee an email. That's all I got.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good. Any other public comments?
I just had a couple of questions on the dam. I had a concern about that. I don't know what's happening up there. Is it, is it piping, or what, what is the problem that we're trying to fix?
Drilling, it was voids.
There was finds coming out of the dam.
Okay, so it's piping, okay? And is that coming from the skirt of the dam?
It was coming from, I'm not sure exactly where.
Water side.
The water side, was, was working water in through. They went to the outside where the, where they found the water coming out, put buckets under it, found sediment in it, and this goes back to, this whole project goes back to Bill, Ted, and myself being on the board.